I call this meeting to order.
It's funny.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That's all right.
I was checking on our security.
Perfect. All right, so we have two remote members tonight. So Jamie and Jim, if you don't mind telling us where you are at and if there is anyone in the room with you, that would be great. We'll start with Jamie.
Yeah, Jamie Fitzpatrick, I'm at Ruby Zen Bryce Canyon City and I am alone.
Great, thank you. Jim?
I'm in a home in Chalmark, Mass. and I'm alone.
Great, thank you. Right, action on the minutes for August 18th, 2021. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, and since we have two remote members, we'll do roll call vote tonight. Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I have already started sending around the manifest documents. Tom, would you like to do nominations?
Sure, we have a glad to welcome Karen Campbell. She has taken the position of System of Care Project Manager, which is the large grant that we received this spring, and Donna Clegg for ESOL teacher, Margot Martin, Special Education Teacher, Callahan Marsden. And for some reason, the physician is left off for that one. Is Callahan? Phyllis, do you know what Callahan's position is? Okay, hold on, I'll ask Diana. Karen Malone, ELA Interventionist, Carolyn Parks, Special Education Teacher, Amber Miller, School Counselor, Amanda Trudeau, Science Teacher, Abigail Watson, English Teacher. And I believe that Callahan is teaching STEM at the high school, but I will confirm. At the middle school, I'm sorry, at the middle school, STEM.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Or accept. All right, any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jamie? Jim?
Yes.
You haven't called my name.
I just said Pete.
Oh, I'm sorry. Try that again.
Mr. Broderick?
There we go. Aye.
Maura?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Sammy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right.
Resignations, we have. With regrets, I just wanted to say that Cynthia Cole accepted a position at Exeter, the Nurse of Memorial, and she wanted me to let everyone know that it was a very difficult decision. Her grandchildren attend school there. So she was really, it was tough. She spoke to Ryan at length about it. At the high school, Lisa House resigned as Special Education School Counselor and Diane McCarthy as School Counselor.
Move to accept with regret. Second. Roll call vote. Jamie? Oh, sorry, discussion. Jamie? We can't hear Jamie. I could see the lips going saying yes, but.
Yes, I, I. Am I back?
Yes.
Yes.
Pete? Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Sammy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, and I just wanted to clarify my previous statement. Callahan Marsden is teaching two sections of Unified Arts at the middle school this year. That's why it's part time. All right, I wanted to take a quick moment to talk to everyone about COVID. I did do another update about the plan today. Just every day, I'm checking the numbers. And we are meeting as an administrative team to, to take a look at the plan and look at the implementation of the plan because it's always good to make a thorough plan, but then when you implement it, you find out what works, what doesn't work, and what you need to do to make things better. That's a natural cycle. So we were having great conversations today about, in light of the fact that the state isn't requiring quarantining the way that they were in the past, how do we notify people if they're close contacts? What, what is the process for that exactly? It's not anything that we wouldn't normally do. We're just trying to figure out how to let people know if they need to monitor themselves if they've been exposed to someone with COVID. At this point, if they have been, they don't even have to necessarily quarantine. So we're working on these things and we will have a more, more thorough update on that at the next board meeting. But the part that I want to talk about tonight is this. I have received a tremendous amount of emails, questions, phone calls that are wonderful. Everyone's thinking about this. They're reading about it. Everyone has their own opinion about it and it is really, really hard and scary for a lot of people. People just want kids to stay in school and they want them to be safe and that's what we want. We, we are monitoring the number of COVID cases in our communities every day. Today, we have 48 COVID cases in three communities with 16,000 residents. It's important to recognize that we have 950 approximately, 950 to 975 households, which is 14.5% of our households have students that are in school. So I need people to understand that the process in the plan says that the data in the plan will be considered when making decisions. It will not definitively drive decisions. And I just want to be completely clear with everyone that the decision-making will be made on all available information. So let me give a couple of quick scenarios. The first scenario is a situation where the Rockingham County rate has gone up, but the number of cases in our three communities is very low. That's the situation we're in right now. We may have a situation where the numbers in our communities goes up. Let's just say for the sake of conversation, that the number of cases in our community doubles in a three-day period to 100. This does not mean that there's school impact because of those 100 people. It's very important to recognize that 100 of those people, 50 of them may live at a nursing home where there's a massive outbreak. They may not have any contact with children. It may not affect school in any way. We're going to ask people to move in the steps in the plan based on school impact and transmission at schools. And that's the primary criteria. The other criteria is important and we are monitoring it regularly. And we just want to make sure that everyone understands that the DOE and the Department of Health and Human Service website has typically been way behind our data because our data is street-level data where the nurses compile the data directly from students. Last year, there were times when we were reporting cases that didn't show up for three weeks. We can't trust information that isn't accurate. One website is saying that we have 48 cases, another one says 30, another one says 35. We're following the Department of Health and Human Service website. So having said that, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we could have a reverse situation where the numbers in the community stay relatively stable, but we have an outbreak at a school or grade level. If that occurs and a number of students have COVID at a building and we're going, we're not going to wait for the Rockingham County numbers to catch up. We're going to respond immediately and ask them to wear masks for 14 days. So I just don't want anyone to be surprised when, when what they think is the right data is, is not used when we make the decision. All the data is being considered in an ongoing manner daily. We are talking daily about what to do and what's going on. 60 to 50% of my job right now is literally talking to people about COVID. And I'm doing that because I don't want the principals to take their focus off teaching and learning. Dr. Haynes and I are handling this because we care, but we want people to understand that there's no one criteria that's going to trigger changes in the plan. And frankly, reflecting on the plan, we pulled the plan up and we were wondering if we needed to bring an amended version of the plan to the board tonight to increase transparency. But when we read the plan, the plan says that data will be considered, not when this, when, when this happens, you'll do X. We're looking at all the different data. Another piece of data that we're looking at actively is the number of actual hospitalizations. That's really important in the area for us to be aware of. It doesn't mean that it affects the school directly, but we need to know what's going on and the severity of an outbreak. So I just wanted to give everyone an update that, that we are working really, really hard to make sure that everyone's safe. And we, we are watching all the information very closely, but the most important data for us is the number of local cases combined with what we're seeing going on at the schools in consultation with our nurses. We're using that data. So at this point, with 48 cases out of 16,000 residents, we are at less than, we're at barely one-third of 1%. That's where we are today. And that's just the raw data, the facts. So that's what we're looking at right now and that is very, very low locally. And should it increase, you will all be the first to know on the board and the community. If we need to make a change to the plan, we will let people know right away. And we just want everyone to know that we're posting our numbers right on our website every day like we did last year. We're totally transparent about it. We've set up a very complex data collection system to keep track of who has COVID, where, when, and who they affect. And it worked great last year and we're certainly totally confident in the wonderful work of our nurses and administrators to monitor the situation. They got us through last year with, with comparatively limited information. We're very excited about the things that they, they are doing this year already and it's only day two. The second thing that I wanted to mention this evening is the busing. I know that folks, we have had a massive increase in bus ridership, which is to be expected because we're coming out of a pandemic and folks weren't, weren't, remember last year? We asked people to not use the bus so that we could have school be open as much as possible. So last year, we had lines and lines of cars out of parking lots waiting to drop kids off and pick them up because parents helped us out and we thanked them for that. I'm just asking that everyone give the poor bus company and Matt a, a week or two to kind of rough out the routes because every year it takes about a week, a week and a half, two weeks to get the bus route settled and get the timing down. This year, it's taking, it's, it's taking a lot of effort because so many people went from not riding to riding. And I just want to remind everyone that, that we do try our best to keep our bus routes between 30 and 45 minutes. There is some misinformation out there that a promise was made during the reorganization that we would keep bus routes to 30 minutes. We, we never made a promise of that. What we said is, we control the bus routes. If we as a board, the board, the community wants shorter bus routes, then you could have 10-minute bus routes if you want to pay for that many buses and stops. You have to decide what the funding is for busing and then we can make the stops be what they are. If we want door-to-door busing, we can double our busing budget and give door-to-door busing. We have that latitude if it's passed by the voters. But right now, what we are doing is trying our very best to keep all the busing under the 40, around 30 minutes, but definitely under the 45 minutes in the policy. Bus routes will take a little bit more than 45 minutes during the first two weeks. It always happens. It even happened last year with less ridership. It just takes time to get, 400 students at Bakey, a large volume of them ride the bus and they have to go out and learn the routines of lining up, finding their bus, getting on the bus, getting settled. It takes a long time with those little guys to get them all settled in. I've done it. I've been a K-2 principal. It's really hard. And, and so the buses are running a little bit late this week and I just want to thank Matt for, Matt has answered, answered at least 100 emails. Salter has had a tremendous amount of feedback about what they, what they could improve from parents and we appreciate that. But we just want to remind everyone that you can't have 30-minute bus runs and have it stop at everyone's house. If you have 16 stops on a bus run at two minutes each, you have a 32-minute bus run. Right? So we, we have to consolidate stops and have kids walk to stops that are in a reasonable distance and that follow the policy and that's what we're doing. So I know in the past, some people may have had to stop in front of their house and they may not anymore. And that's just part of declining enrollment. It's, we have to adjust the bus routes. The last thing that, well, two more things. One is staffing. We have had some, some resignations this fall. Super frustrating. Some of them are folks that I've spoken to or their principals. And we've received some emails about these, so I wanted to share just a little bit of data about, about our attrition. Excuse me for just one second. I don't like the glasses. And F, this includes all staff, custodians, teachers, secretaries, administrators, everyone, except for people that we did not ask back. So if we didn't ask someone back, they don't count as a quote resignation. They didn't choose to leave. Okay? I just want everyone to understand that attrition has been a significant problem for Sanborn for almost 15 years. When I was hired, it was one of the biggest concerns that I heard when I did my interview. My, my process of, I did 150 hours of meeting with people individually. And it came up a lot as a historical problem. It's, it really bothers me. But I just want to be clear that we had a number of late resignations this summer, which is a trend in New Hampshire. Okay? I spoke to the Uniserv Director for our union today and she was like, it is happening everywhere right now. Diana Rooney spoke to Primex and her folks in the HR world and they said it's a lot of late resignations everywhere. But just to put this in perspective, in FY 2018, 44 people resigned. In FY 2019, 43 people resigned. In FY 2020, 35 people left the organization. And this year, 43 left the organization. So in a four-year average, it has not changed at all. But it's too high. And people, people jump to conclusions that it's because people aren't happy with the, the leadership or they're not happy with the culture of the workplace. I want to be crystal clear and transparent about it. Staff members have told me that they are getting between $15,000 and $19,000 more a year to leave. When you make $55,000 to $60,000 a year and you get a $15,000 raise, it increases your retirement for the rest of your life. So when we come back around to contract negotiations, this will be the conversation for everybody. If we want to keep our staff, we have to pay them. Sorry, I'm not going to have, have my wonderful team of administrators that are working night and day, literally to the point of tears to manage this place in a global pandemic, be beat up because people have chose to leave for a job that literally set them up with better retirement. We failed four contracts. Prior to me being here, we've not failed any since I've been here. Four contracts means that those people lost four steps for their entire career if they stay here. We have had people get, the raises aren't just the difference. We are one of the lowest-paying districts out of the 10 regional districts. But that's not the only issue. The issue is the failed contracts mean the teachers don't get those steps. So you could be teaching in one room, Maura, for $50,000 with 15 years of experience and Dawn could be teaching in the next room with 10 years of experience and be making more money than you. I just wanted to kind of paint that out so people know.
Can I just, I want to echo on that because I was Sanbornized, as you know.
That's right.
I lost, I think, three years. It's over a quarter of a million dollars because I not only lost my steps, increased steps for three years, but that's, let's say $6,000 for 10 years. It's 60 grand. But I also lost my social security and retirement because I would be getting a pension on that.
Yep.
So when teachers don't get salary increases, it's not just a $2,000 perhaps they don't get in, in an increase. It's their social security and their pension.
Yes, sir.
And it's $2,000 each year for as many years as they teach.
Yes.
There's one other thing that I want to have people understand. We're not just in competition with Exeter or Plasto, you know, Timberlane. We're in competition with Massachusetts.
That's correct.
I have a daughter with 23 years' experience, teaches in Massachusetts, lives in New Hampshire. She's making over $90,000 a year. Top step here is what, 72?
At the most.
All right, so she's picking up 20-plus thousand dollars a year to do the exact same job. Now she happens to be in Lowell, you could say, well, that's, but she's in an elementary school. But that's what we're in competition with. We're in competition with Amesbury. We're competition with as far down as Andover. Right? Be, be nothing for somebody to get into Andover. You could actually say it'd be nothing to get through Route 128. But, so it's not just the New Hampshire schools we're in competition with. We're in competition with people who are paying $30,000 and my daughter, she was the last graduate in class, doesn't need a master's. She hasn't got her master's yet. She has four children instead, right? But if she had her master's, it should be 100,000.
So, so I just want to clarify too that we're also in competition with Maine. I just lost two of my best teachers, one to Massachusetts and one to Maine. And you have to remember that the retirement is based on the, the employee's top three years of salary. So when someone leaves here with 10 or 15 years of experience and they get a $20,000 raise, because when, you know, they'll get a percentage each year. So let's just say it's 17,000 when they leave. But they'll get a percentage each year moving forward. Their top three years is what their retirement is based on. And that's why Pete was saying it's close to a quarter of a million dollars because if you, if you're retired for 25 years and you're receiving your benefits, that money is very, very important. So I, I don't, and look, I'm not, I'm not saying that some people aren't, there are people who are really unhappy with how we collectively, the board, me, the administration handled the pandemic. That played into them leaving. But I have news for folks who think that every district has struggled to handle the pandemic and some people were unhappy that we were in school more than any other district. Well, if you don't want to be here and teach, then I understand that, that's what I want to do every day is see kids and help them. Right? And it was scary and hard and there were some hard feelings and I'm okay with that. But what I'm, what I'm, I'm not going to do is have the pandemic overshadow the real issue, which is the salaries. So I just want to share that to be open, right? I, I take feedback and I listen to it and I think about it and I think, oh goodness, what can we do? And, and when people send me emails complaining about things, I ask, well, what could we do better or differently? We, we want to know that, right? But the reality is, is that, um, you know, we got to let our poor bus folks figure it out. It's only day two. We've got to, we've got to move forward with seeing how things go. I mean, we've got a seven through 12 school where everybody has had the option to be vaccinated. We need to see what happens. We need to see what happens with K-6 and we're going to watch those numbers like crazy. I just assure you that with all of my spirit and soul that I am right on top of it with COVID. Partly because I want my administrators focused on teaching and learning. Brian Stack told me they had a full day of teaching and learning and talking about grading for the first time in three years at the opening days. A full day. He said it was fantastic. Patty, Dr. Haynes went over and did a great presentation. So I'm going to the opening days now because it's way more fun. But, but it went really, really well. And so I just, I'll take a moment to wrap up. And again, none of this is, it's, I just want to dismiss some of these rumors or clarify things. I'm not upset or, it's just frustrating to, I feel bad for people that have misinformation and don't call and ask. I'm happy to tell them and talk to them about it. It doesn't mean that I'm going to say what they want to hear, but I'll at least clarify what we are doing. And I'm always happy to do that with anybody and I've had a lot of people reach out. Thank you for that. Especially around the busing lately. I'm getting a lot of bus emails. But Matt's getting way more. All right, so opening of school. Rode the bus. It was awesome. It was as fun as always. I was super excited because I actually knew the parents of some of the kids and, and I just had the best time with the kids. My favorite part was learning, a kindergarten and third grade student sat next to me and told me all about their dogs, their dog's names, the animals that live in their backyard, who their dog chases and how cool riding the bus was. They loved the bus. So they, it was really fun. And I have to say, it was one of the best bus rides. Like the kids were just so happy to be back to school. I have visited every single classroom in the district, some twice in the last two days. I, I went to every school and walked around the first day to every room and I just can't tell you how great it was to see kids with their friends smiling and, and working with teachers and learning and being outside. I mean, it was just, it feels like it went so fast this year because last year we had a six-week remote period and then we kind of came back and it wasn't really everybody and it was kind of weird and uncomfortable. So the teachers were like, this felt like warp speed. And I said, well, it, it kind of was, two days versus six weeks. And then in addition to that, we, we really had a wonderful time this afternoon. Our staff met, they had staff meetings and they talked about things. And I just wanted to convey that there's been a real, a real positive energy in the district these last two days among the kids and the teachers and it's really energizing for us. For me, I know you visited some buildings and the central office team has really made a commitment to getting out to buildings regularly and being in classrooms. So Patty, Jody and Christine, Matt, they all went out to buildings and visited the buildings too. So we've really just been spending time in the classrooms and really if we're looking at budget in the process moving forward, then that's super important for us to be with people. So it's been a great, great week. Super positive, super fun. And I'm looking forward to next week when we're more settled with our routines.
All right, Jamie has been very patiently waiting.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
That's all right. He, he had his hand up. He was being nice and polite and patient over there.
So I just wanted to make a couple of points. I agree with the comments that were made about our teachers' impact in some of these failed contracts and their, their salaries being lower than other districts. I just want to point out some of the other sides of the comparison. Other sides of comparison are some of these other districts have higher teacher-student ratios than Sanborn does. That's a trade-off that's possible. Also, another trade-off that's possible, if people are looking to maximize their retirement is to minimize some of the other benefits, like 89% paid for health insurance. So you could trade that off and lower your health insurance costs and increase your salary, which would increase your retirement. So there's a number of trade-offs that are available. It's not a one-sided equation. And, and for transparency, I want to make sure that was on the table as well as the other points. Thank you.
I agree with everything you just said, Jamie. Those are great points. Thanks for clarifying.
Jim's got his hand up too. Jim?
Yeah. And I think, you know, Tom read off the, the, the years or said that since he's been here, there's, the teachers' contracts have passed along with administration contact tracks and support staff contracts. And I would just say historically, contracts pass when operating budgets are reasonable. And if you look back to prior school boards and the history there, you can, you can see what the proposed operating budgets were and you can correlate that to whether a teacher's contract passed or failed. You can go back in time 10, 15 years and you can look at that. And every time there was a big increase in the operating budget, the teacher's contract or the other staff contracts failed. So I know this board knows that, but there's a lot of people out there that, that may not understand that. And the, the public is very generous, but they don't want to be taken advantage of. And as Jamie said, if we're promoting low class sizes, there's a parallel to that. And if you, Pete, if you ask your daughter what she's size or class size is, I'll bet it's a pretty good size. And that's, that's, that's all I have to say.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for that. And, and I did just want to reiterate before we move on to the next item that I have never felt more supported by the community than this last voting season. Our community voted and passed a, a, a teacher's contract for three years in the midst of a massive pandemic. And we did work on keeping the budget low to, to support that process. And they also supported our administrators. So I just want to be clear that I really appreciate what's gone on since I've been here. I can only manage what, what I experience and what, what I've done for work. And we are making great progress to rectify these things. We're just not, we're, we're working on it, right? It's kind of what we've been working on for four years. So thanks, Jim. I appreciate that. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Committee reports.
No, our meeting was canceled yesterday, today, and our next meeting is October 6.
Excellence in Student Achievement.
Yes. Yes, the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met two weeks ago on August 18. In attendance were myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton. We had quite a number of administrators, so bear with me here. Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Ms. DeRosa in her new role as Director of Academic Intervention Assessment and Accountability, Ms. Donnell, K-6. Ms. Donnell, K through six math coordinator. From the high school, we had Mr. Stack and Mr. Kurzenowski, a middle school principal, Mr. Malilla, Memorial Principal, Mr. McCloskey, and the Bakey Principal, Mr. Kennett. And let's see, Dr. Haynes reported on a grading manual proposed for implementation this year to standardize terminology used in grading. So it would be more cohesive and coherent. Formative and summative, those terms will be replaced by clearer, more intuitive terms as evidence of learning. Competencies will also be refined to focus on a smaller, more standardized list for subject areas throughout K twelve. The administration reported that they had done an sort of an audit of competencies and there were at least six thousand different competencies. So they're paring that list down. Reassessment practices will also be addressed to more closely, more closely aligned with the goal, which is to ensure that students achieve proficiency during the unit and not at the end of the school year and before moving on, or to identify areas where additional help may be needed. Mr. Ambrose reported on strategic planning with regard to academics and NIASC accreditation. The administrators had attended a retreat where academics were discussed at length in light of the NIASC rubric. One requirement of the accreditation is to define a clear scope and sequence for education, which has been previously identified as a district need. The strategic plan work on this will also coincide and help to prepare for the NIASC accreditation. Dr. Haynes thanked Ms. Donnell, who has been working hard on the K through six math curriculum rollout to provide the teachers with training resources, access to online components and materials. Teachers are excited to move forward with the new curriculum and Ms. Donnell feels that good progress is being made there. Ms. Donnell has also acquired the materials for the seven through twelve math pilot, which is being conducted this year. And in October, the same procedure will be implemented that was used to select the new K through six math program, hopefully to produce a recommendation for adoption going forward. Our next meeting is on two weeks from today, September fifteenth at fourth.
Finance.
Yeah, I I gave a quick report out at the last meeting of our meeting on the eighteenth. I will have something written up more formal when I review those videos and I did. Like I gave pertinent information last meeting and our next meeting is also.
Thank you. Facilities.
Yeah. First, I I just want to applaud the administration and ISA on the incredible job they're doing on improving the academics and all the planning involved. And I just got to tell you, I I love Christine DeRocher's title, Academic Intervention Assessment and Accountability. That's just fab and fantastic. I'm looking forward to all of it, seeing it roll out. As for facilities, we met today at three thirty. I'll have the report next week. Or not next week, yeah, at the next board meeting. And the next facilities meeting is October sixth at three thirty PM.
Thank you. All right, Public Relations.
Nothing to report.
Personnel, nothing to report right now. Our next meeting is October twentieth. Anything for SSD?
No, they rescheduled.
Okay. More anything for budget?
No, our next meeting is October seventh.
Okay.
Thank you.
And all right. Jocelyn, it's your turn.
So today was the first day for upperclassmen at the high school and yesterday was the first day for freshmen. I think it went pretty well. And yesterday there were a lot of first sports games and everyone seemed excited about that, like starting up again. Student Council has had two meetings already and they've been working very hard to come up with new ideas for this year's homecoming because they have lost the booster. So they have to come up with different ideas to have similar things, but just not with the booster money. But it's looking good. And yeah.
Can I, can I just put in a plug for that? I I talked to Mr. Stack about this and I just want everyone to know that the the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the athletic boosters, one of the booster groups has folded. Which which group was it again?
I'm not sure exactly which group did it.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I don't want to say the wrong name, not athletic boosters, but
they are no longer running the concession stand.
Yeah. So anyway, one of the boost, Mr. Stack needs help. I'm just going to keep this simple because I don't, can't remember all the different groups. We we have had a boosters group fold at the high school because we didn't have enough people to run it. So if anyone's interested in volunteering to help, they're worried about homecoming. So I'll just talk about what we discussed. They can't run the normal homecoming parade without the parents to volunteer to help. It's too much. So they're making alternative plans, but they know the community will be disappointed. But the community also has to volunteer to help to get that event to occur. So Brian is working hard on it, but the problem for us is that it's one thing for staff to just show up for an hour or two and help out at an event like that. They cannot run it. It's it's too big.
What day is homecoming?
Ah, the, do you know the date?
So I do know that it's a twenty, the Saturday is the twenty fifth, which is like when all the homecoming games start.
Is this September or October?
September.
So like September twenty fifth?
Yep, a couple of weeks from now. Three weeks.
But I think most, like, the plans are kind of not exactly like, so I don't think we can now change it back to Saturday, but the boosters are definitely needed for the future because this year we've figured it out, but.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is if if folks are, would be willing to help out, please contact Mr. Stack. We'll keep it that simple. He needs help with some of these booster activities if we want to continue them for our community.
I know Brian did send out an email because I was still on the high school email list. Maybe that gets sent out from the district.
Sure, we can do that. Yep. Phyllis, can you remind me? We'll send, we'll add that to a constant contact Friday.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So is, are there not going to be any homecoming activities on Saturday?
Homecoming activities, I think it might be only like all the sports games is going to be the football game, like all of the regular stuff, but usually we do the parade and that's not.
And the skits and.
Yeah, so that's probably going to move to a different day or it's just not going to happen. Everyone.
They're still working on it, but when this booster group folded, it really made it bit, made it very challenging. Brian, Brian called me on on Tuesday, called me into his office while I was visiting the schools and told me what was going on.
Is it too late for a parade? Is that off the table or are you saying?
I don't want to muddy the water. I would say if you're interested in helping, contact Brian.
I was told, like, say, basics, because there's nothing officially finalized, so don't go into details and whatever.
Thanks.
But so there's going to be something that's happening. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a parade, but nothing's finalized because we don't have everything covered and stuff to make it happen.
They're still working on plans to deal with it. It was kind of surprising to them too. So they they would love a hand if folks want to help.
Okay.
First public comment. We will move on. All right, Matt. Year twenty two, twenty budget calendar.
All right, so before you is the updated budget calendar for this year. And it's pretty much the same as last year, except there's just one major change I want to point it out. The public hearing is going to be on January eleventh for presenting the budget to the to the public. And that's going to be a Tuesday with a snow day on Wednesday. And we're trying to move it back because if it's on a Thursday and Friday, that's the day before a major holiday or weekend. And we think we're going to have staffing problems if it falls on a Friday night or even Thursday night before a major holiday. Okay? Otherwise, I don't really have much to say about the budget calendar. It's just similar to the prior years.
I need a motion to accept.
Yes.
Move to accept. Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Heather?
I guess.
Yes, and myself, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Truck lease purchase for first read.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to go up to the podium for this one.
Is anyone else happy to have Matt back? I'm like just saying, we got dinner today. We, you know, it's just nice.
Oh, your bromance, yay.
Wouldn't go that far. Well, maybe, yeah.
Tom did say he's dumping all of his emails over there.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to be asking the school board to approve a lease purchase of a two thousand twenty two Ford F three fifty service body. Basically, what this is, it's yeah, he is going to be working the physical body of the parking lots. And we're also going to be using the utility body to maintenance equipment inside of it. So when our maintenance is involved, it used to be over at the middle school, they're now assigned to the two elementary schools. And he needs a vehicle to move equipment from one building to another. We're going to be replacing an older vehicle. This is a two thousand and eight Ford F three fifty. It's a dual dump truck. Parked it right out front. You had to walk past it from the building. And let me just tell you some issues that we're currently having with that truck. Power steering. Longer holds fluid. Just it out. The dump no longer works. If the dump goes up, we have to use the tractor to go push it back down. There's a problem with suspension, so the truck starts shaking at thirty five miles an hour. The ABS system works intermittently.
Bent. And also every time the truck pushes snow up against the snowbank, it blows a fuse and the headlights go out. Okay, so let's see, I want to show. Is it up? Oh, I gotta slide the pictures over? Okay. So this is the truck. Let me see if I can zoom it in. And I'm doing this with my reading glasses. Okay, so that's not that bad. So this is the rocker. Okay. This is the bed of the truck. There's a hole in the, in the, in the dump body. This is underneath the truck. This right here is a body support and it's starting to get rot in the body support. Let's see. This is the leading edge of the dump body and there's a hole in it right here. This is on the driver's side.
Matt, you can just hit the arrow. You don't have to keep going out in and out to the pictures. You can just hit the arrow and they'll go in a slideshow.
I honestly, I have my reading glasses on. I can't see it. All right, this is a picture from underneath the truck, looking up through the truck, and then you can see the gaping holes. That's not the best one, though. Let's see, let's go to the best one. This one right here and you can see the blue sky through that one. This is the back of the truck. And it's, let's see, this is the passenger side back and there's a hole on the, this is where the the tailgate is. And then this is the other side. And there's a gaping hole right there. And actually, we have this diamond plate on the side of the truck because that's hiding more holes through the side of the body. And then here's another body mount. And then this one here has a rod in it right up through here. Okay? So let's see. I want to pull up. Let's see. Okay, the purchase price of this truck is forty eight thousand three hundred and seventy six dollars. The annual lease payments are going to be ten thousand four hundred, I'm sorry, ten thousand seven hundred and forty two dollars and twenty eight cents. I believe. I had the payment schedule up on my computer. It's going to be about fifty four. Oh, I had the payment schedule right here. It's going to be about five thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars in interest over the life of the loan. So it's going to be a five year loan. Okay? Let me go back to my oh, yeah, the the other important thing to note is, is the first payment is going to happen in this next fiscal year. So we're going to be putting the ten thousand dollar payment in the in the budget, the up and coming budget cycle. All right, that's all I have. Any questions?
I think Mr. Angel didn't want the board to feel surprised or cornered by the need, like we've known about this truck needing to be replaced. And we also wanted to be super transparent because this is funny. I don't know why this keeps coming up tonight, but my entry plan meetings, when I met with all those people, somebody bought a truck in two thousand and one and I still hear about it now, twenty, twenty years later. So Matt and I were like, we're not going to have that happen. We're going to put it on an agenda. We're going to show pictures. We put the truck out front. We just, we don't want any truck trouble. We've got enough to deal with right now. So so what what Matt did was he put, he placed it on the agenda for the purpose of giving you an opportunity. If the board is comfortable moving forward with leasing the truck, we're ready to do this. But if you'd like to wait until the next meeting so you can think about it, we're fine with that. We just, we just wanted you to know, we're certainly comfortable with moving forward if you are. And I turn it over to Jim and Jamie, who were at the meeting earlier today where we discussed this.
Jim?
Yeah. The facilities committee, after hearing the proposal and reviewing the costs, recommended that we do this. I want to point out that the pricing is, it's a state pricing program, which is typically very competitive pricing on equipment. The, it's a five year lease and the the five year cost is ten thousand seven hundred and forty two dollars and twenty two cents each year. The previous truck was a two thousand and eight and it lasted for thirteen years. If we get the same life out of this truck, it's a amortized annual cost of four thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars and sixty four cents, but it will be paid off again in five years at the ten thousand seven hundred. So we did recommend it.
Jamie?
I'll just add to that. So we've been talking about this truck in the facilities meeting. And it's time to to put it to rest. It's, it's gotten thirteen good, hard years out of it. You can look at the truck body and say, yep, it certainly, it's certainly gotten hard years out of it. But it's past the point of functionality. We've used it up as best we can use it up and now it's time to replace it. And so we recommended and supported this this program.
Just a little quick history for you. What happened was we needed a truck. It was a warrant article. People talked about it. A person got up and said, I'd like to amend this warrant article to a price you couldn't buy a car for. Another person got up and said, I'm a mechanic. Bring it to me and I'll tell you how much it costs to fix it. Bottom line was, the warrant article did not pass. But the school district found some money in the budget and bought a truck anyway.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I remember this.
Hence, one of our state representatives put in a bill, which is why we now have today, no means no. So if you put it in a warrant article, you run the risk of not getting one. In this town, we buy a police cruiser roughly every year and then if you buy two and then that, I don't want to get too technical with you, but that cruiser then becomes a detail cruiser, which actually pays for itself. But that's in the budget. Because you don't want to hang out a truck like this and have it not pass. Because you'll end up with a truck who that, I don't even know how you got it. How did we even get that inspected? All right, so you'll have an unserviceable truck that you can't use. Somehow you've got to magically get rid of the snow. I don't know. What, you go out there with blow torches or something and have the kids stomp their feet? I don't know. So you got to be very careful what you put in warrant articles, not just trucks for other items. We're aware of other items.
Mr. Fitzpatrick's retired. He's going to be shoveling this winter. You've got to plan for him with all his energy.
Nothing to do all day.
That's right. That's right.
So anyway, so so you want to be real careful what you put in a warrant article, especially something of this. Because if it doesn't pass, boy, you in a whole bunch of trouble.
Yeah, no, I I think Matt's plan is to have it be a part of our, the school district budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's going to state bid, so you're not going to get it any cheaper.
Right. And that's why we're thinking that we've got to.
Just so people don't, people know, when it comes to buying things like police cars or trucks like that, the state goes to the manufacturers and says how much, and then they tell everybody and you have to have the bid in at a certain amount of time so that they know they're going to order so many, one of them will come to Sandborne, you know. so that they know they're going to order so many, and one of them will come to Sanborn, you know. So it's, it's a, it's a, I looked at it and said, you're going to buy this for forty-eight, I mean, I just looked at a pickup truck. It was sixty grand, a pickup truck with a plow. You know, but they're going to probably buy ten of them or twenty of them, you know, for the state and the school districts and the towns and everything. So that's why. So I'll tell you right now, anybody who's listening, if you can get an F three fifty for forty-eight thousand dollars, buy ten of them, you'll make money.
When I looked at the price, I was like, is that real?
Yeah, is there a one missing? Yeah, yeah.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Thank you. So if the board is comfortable with moving forward, I think if the board's comfortable with doing a motion and moving forward, we'd like to.
Can I just, because I know when I first read this, I was like, lease, oh my goodness. But this is a municipal type lease where it's a lease style, but at the end you buy it out for like a dollar kind of thing.
It's a lease, okay, but we will own it for no dollar at the end. I mean, it's just, we will own it at the end.
I just don't want people to be nervous that we're leasing something that in a few years, we're going to have to return. Or when I hear lease, I start to panic because I have kids. And I know I worry about every single little ding, dent, or drop that happens, but that is not this situation.
And it's a common, this is actually a common financing form for municipalities. Actually, our newest truck, we finally paid off, I think, last year or the year before, and it was a lease purchase as well.
Great.
So I move, we approve the purchase of the truck.
Second. Any discussion? All right, and I guess we'll roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Jamie?
Pete?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Back to you again.
Yep. According to school board policy, DIH, the school board is required to approve all the check signers for our bank accounts annually. And so in the document, I provided a list of all of our bank accounts and all the signers. So it's just a really quick list. Do you want me to go through the list?
I don't think you have to read it aloud.
Is there more than one page in there to sign?
Nope, it's just one page. Yes.
No, I did it. I was just thinking afterwards that maybe I'm.
So do they have to do a vote and approve, or do they just sign the document?
No, 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 vote in. It's in the Google Drive. It's not in the folder.
It's in the Google Drive.
Yeah, so just a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Just a discussion. We do have four of us here, or five of us here, so is it going to be enough people to sign it? But Jamie and Jim, if you get a chance, you might want to go down and sign this the next day or so.
Or when they get, when they return from where they are.
Yeah, okay, it's just, we have enough, but I just won't.
Thank you. We have a quorum physically, but.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Oh, Jamie?
I just want clarification for the record. Now, this is the same, the same people and titles that have had the authority before. We're not adding or changing anything to that effect, correct?
That's correct. So basically, it's the district treasurer has access to all bank accounts, and then every building principal and assistant principal have access to their student activity funds. And so if we had any change in principals or assistant principals, then they would be new to the list.
The titles would be the same.
The titles are the same.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, there is no old business. So second public comment. And so the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six PM in the library with a public hearing on donations to begin at six thirty PM at the Sanborn Regional High School. And we will.
We do, non-public, and we didn't put the letter, but it is negotiations, just so that everyone knows.
Madam Chairman, make a motion. We're going to non-public, according to the RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, number two.
Second. All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes. And myself, yes. Great.